What's a rollover? A rollover? A rollover? A lot of, a lot has changed. If you had to go to all the front of the front of the building, then it was something pretty important. Change of. Yeah, sometimes it's good to do that. I'm sorry to miss the timing.
Are you sure? Are you sure? I'm lacking a hundred percent sincerity.
I had another meeting so.
We didn't realize we canceled the meeting.
Yeah, yeah, sure. So, I, I was at the meeting before you guys were doing your little analog meeting.
And Ryan's announcing.
So, like, so the reason why that last article wasn't worked out is to.
Yes.
Where the heck are they?
So now we're actually getting down to.
Yeah, got it.
But you guys can be all around. So, but actually, it's not going to get down to that place.
Well, it wasn't negative or anything. Guess what? Waste water and how it affects. CNC really wants, wants indicators for those who.
Are indicators?
Operative only. Close continually. They're kind of open to that, but how do you define when it goes? It's going to be a transitional, rotational thing over time. How do you, how do you define when the criteria fall?
Okay, fine, yeah.
Right, it was easy for us all to read. The challenge doesn't change much, then.
Call to order the special meeting of Fox Canyon Groundwater Management Agency vote directors. Ask everyone to join and follow up with these.
Just put your hand over your heart and follow along with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the best will, liberty and justice for all.
The roleful.
Chair West.
Yes.
Director Bennett.
Here.
Director Aranio.
Here.
Director Borchardt.
Here.
Now, all the minutes were referred. Only two items on the agenda, so I take it that there's only two of anything, correct? Couple of comments, and I think a couple of comments on matters not outlined on today's agenda. I'll come forward and ask time for more comments, and any comments I can support. All right, I want to move on then with item number one, the fiscal seventeen eighteen work plan and budget.
Good afternoon, Chair West, members of the board, for the record, Kim Loeb, GMA staff. And so this item is regarding the twenty seventeen eighteen work plan and budget. And so the process is for the budget be prepared by staff, comes to the fiscal committee, which met and has reviewed it, hold a study session to provide feedback to the staff. And then, then when they're satisfied, they recommend scheduling it to come before your full board for, for review and discussion and consideration for adoption. So, the budget is components, is comprised of two components. One is the, the work plan, both of these are in the, the board packet. And the work plan lists out the tasks and the estimates of labor and costs for accomplishing those tasks. And it's broken into essentially two sections or two groups. One is the routine agency administration, annual operations. And then the second part are special expenditures. Then the other piece is the draft budget worksheet, which is a cash flow balance, gives an estimate of the designated account balances, revenue and expenditures, and fund balances at the end of the projected fiscal year. And we'll get into each of those in a little more detail here in a moment. So, the work plan is broken into, like I said, a couple of sections. And in the annual agency operations, it's divided into five sections, administration and fiscal services, record services, which is, administration fiscal services is basically putting, holding board meetings, committee meetings, all the day-to-day stuff that we do. Record services is recording and extractions, levying the extraction charges, recording all that, registering wells and meters and all that kind of thing. Technical services, which is principally groundwater technical services, legal services, and then public outreach are normal, everyday operation type public outreach. The special expenditures include the groundwater sustainability plan development, public outreach related specifically to SIGMA in the sustainability plan because we're doing additional outreach there. Development of new allocation systems, that's taking a lot, a lot of effort and is not a routine effort, so we pulled that into special expenditures. And then Los Postes water replacement study, that's pretty much completed. There's just a little bit of funding that's left spilled into this fiscal year. And then we have added the AMI, AMI and water market as a special expenditure that is divided up the way that we need to account for it, for the grant that we will be receiving from the Natural Resources Conservation Service via the Nature Conservancy under a sub-grant to them. That will fund advanced metering infrastructure, help us develop new data management system performance specifications, water market development implementation, and then the, the project management reporting for the grant purposes. So those are the components of the work plan. Now, there's some assumptions in terms of full-time equivalents, they're, they're considered to be eighteen hundred hours in a year, so it does not include vacation time and those kind of things which don't get charged to GMA. Two new positions are proposed in this budget. One is a, an office assistant to help us with additional, our additional clerical load. And the other is a, in our, in the county classifications, an engineering technician, but what that person really is, is a, somebody who is a data person, a spreadsheet wizard, can do a lot of analyses and can do the kind of detailed data analyses that we need on a regular basis and be dedicated to that function. The current budget or proposed budget has seven point one full-time equivalents. The previous budget had five point six full-time equivalents, as Director Borchardt helped us point out, that, that sixteen seventeen fiscal year is in fact based, those full-time, those are approved full-time equivalents, not what the actual costs ended up being, which were less. So the proposed charges for public works agency, which provides the staffing under contract for overall in this budget is one point four million. Just a little bit more than a million of that is for our annual agency operations and about four hundred and forty-two thousand for the special expenditure operations tasks. On the budget worksheet, at the top of it, it has designated accounts. Your board has created three designated, well, two designated accounts, a designated gems count and a designated surcharges account, as well as a reserve account. And then, under the operating accounts, it shows the beginning balance, the revenue projected this year, the projected expenditures, the projected operating fund balance at the end, and the total projected fund balance. What we have on here is also is the adopted budget from last year, sixteen seventeen, and then the year-end actuals that were expended and received, the, the actual cash flows for the year. And that's been updated since the fiscal committee met, and so now they've, our fiscal folks have closed the books on sixteen seventeen, and these are the, the ending balances. So, of the designated accounts, there's a gems account, has a beginning balance of about one point five million, assumes fifteen thousand in interest in the year. The designated surcharges account, so any surcharges that we charge for over pumping, they go into the designated surcharge account. It starts the year with two million, and we assume eight hundred thousand dollars in surcharges. I should mention that for that AMI water market grant program and on, at the January twenty-fifth board meeting, your board committed five hundred and forty-one thousand dollars in matching funds from the designated surcharges account for the, that grant program. And in this fiscal year, we are assuming that we'll need to pull a hundred and eighty-five thousand of that match to move into the operations to pay for that grant match. And then the reserve account, your, your board has established a one million dollar reserve balance. In terms of revenue, based on assumed extraction of a hundred and twenty-five thousand acre feet, we'd have seven hundred and fifty thousand from extraction, eight hundred and twelve thousand five hundred from the sustainability fee. The groundwater sustainability plan grant that the county received on behalf of the GMA was two hundred and fifty thousand. There's seventy-seven thousand left to be paid in this fiscal year. The water market AMI grant, we're projecting of the close to eight hundred thousand federal money that we get, that we would receive two hundred and ninety thousand this fiscal year, the majority of that will hit the next year. Then there's a hundred and eighty-five thousand transfer from the surcharges, assume thirty thousand dollars in interest earnings, and assume seventy-five thousand in penalty. For expenditures.
I'm going to catch you on the revenue.
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
Just one thing, we're using a hundred and twenty-five thousand to estimate our groundwater sustainability fee. Our actual in sixteen seventeen was six hundred and eighty thousand. How many acre feet was that? Excuse me.
And I should have that at my fingertips. I want to say we had close to a hundred and forty thousand acre feet of extraction, so this, this number is, I would say, optimistic and conservative. We do think that there will be somewhat less pumping this year because of the rains that came that started extraction a little bit later. But I think that, that this is.
So, so we were at a hundred and forty, we were back to a hundred and twenty-five. Let's say there, let's say that, that, that was some larger number. Is the sustainability fee higher? Is that why we went up from a six eighty to eight hundred and twelve thousand? That's what I want to know. How did we go from six?
Oh, oh, your board increased the sustainability fee last year. It started out at four dollars and you increased it to six fifty. I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
And when does, when does, when did that take effect? Middle, middle of the fiscal year, something like that?
Yes, I think it was, I'm not sure about that. I think it was the middle of the fiscal year.
Okay, all right, that's, all right, fine.
I'm pretty sure of that.
So it's, it's a higher sustainability.
It's a higher sustain, yes, yes, correct, Director Bennett.
Thank you.
Okay, are we ready to move on?
Yeah.
Okay. So expenditures, this lists expenditures that are greater than ten thousand. And legal fees are projected one fifty. GMA online support and GIS licensing at sixty-eight thousand. There's a consultant contracts line item that carries over to give the executive officers some discretion there that wasn't utilized, I don't think, in last year. GSP development, that's the remaining balance of the current due deck contract for this fiscal year. Your board approves some additional public outreach related to the, to SIGMA and the GSPs, and that's the remaining balance in that effort for this year. AMI implementation, that's our projected expenditures related to the grant program for this fiscal year. The PWA charges, those are the ones we just talked about in the work plan. And then, your board's directed that we hold a hundred thousand dollar contingency in the budget as well, and so that's a line item there. Any questions on the expenditures? So the cash flow, we have a total fund beginning balance of five, about five point three million dollars. The operating fund beginning balance is about seven hundred and forty thousand dollars. Projected revenues of two point two million, operating expenses projected of two point nine million, and then the contingency there of a hundred thousand if it gets spent. That would leave an ending operating fund balance of negative seventy-five thousand. The designated accounts balance would end about five point two million, and the total fund balance would be ending at five point one million. And I should point out that the past fiscal year as well, the operating expense balance expenses was greater than the revenues, but was carried through with a starting higher opening balance like that. And a lot of that has to do with the special expenditures that we're incurring now with the GSP and the other things we've talked about. Any questions on this slide? So, the budget worksheet, we have talked about the need to replace the database system. We are developing the, what the performance needs would be, basically a performance specification for that. Through our allocation discussions, water market, really trying to make sure that we encompass all our future needs. And one of the parts of the grant program was we have a in-kind labor match, and one of those tasks is to develop those requirements. And moving forward, I think what our hope is that we can find a, a vendor who supplies data management services that could be more of a subscription, a software as a service, that would be cloud-based rather than building from scratch our own database. That's very expensive and it tends to be more, less flexible and moving forward. So we'll be, stay tuned for that, but this budget doesn't include those expenses. As I mentioned, the seventeen eighteen estimated operating revenue is, is a little, is less than the expenditure slightly. And that was something the fiscal committee didn't see a particular issue with since the fund balance was, was high. And I did mention that was the same there. So that's pretty much my presentation of the work plan and budget to you. So at this point, I request any feedback or direction that you have.
Questions from the board?
Help me understand here what I just heard in regards to the database management. What you said, is that basically another way saying that you were going to outsource the construction or operation or management of the database, the new system that we would need?
That's one of the things that we're considering. No, no decision's been made, no decision will be made without coming before your board and presenting some options. But that is, we met earlier this year with the head of the county IT and some other folks, and they were suggesting that might be the most efficient and effective way for us to move forward with our future data management needs. And so that's something we'll definitely explore, but what we have to do through this process is really put together in a very concise and explicit way exactly what our data management needs are, so then we can start going out and finding what the best solution is to fit those needs. But with a lot of things, a lot of software, especially enterprise software, is going to software as a service where it's a subscription-based. That way, there's not a large capital outlay, you're not, you're not stuck with the system, you're paying a, an operation and maintenance, a subscription fee, if you will, for customization and maintenance of that. So, there's a traction for that. The IT folks tell us whether we would go inside or we would, you know, look for an outside vendor, that the, the cost for our data needs would be pretty high to build a from, from scratch solution. There might be something in between, which is some sort of off-the-shelf project, product that can be modified slightly. We don't know yet because we're still defining our needs of what this system needs to do. Once we have that fully defined, then we can look and see what would be the best solution for the GMA's needs moving forward. But if it is a large capital outlay, then that's not included in the budget because we don't know what that would be.
In, in general, I'm, I'm not comfortable adopting a budget that's not balanced, revenue versus expenditures. And so, I would like to have a short discussion here to decide whether I want to make a motion to put a fee increase, a modest fee increase, on the agenda for us to discuss at a future meeting. But I'd like to hear, was that entertained at the executive committee meeting? It looks like a seventy-five cent increase in the sustainability fee would wipe out the seventy-five thousand dollar, you know, deficit that we have. In general, I think you're, you know, to try to run a groundwater sustainability agency, et cetera, we want to make sure we have the resources to do it right. I'm not trying to get more money than we need, but I also uncomfortable having sort of a, you know, having a budget that we recognize the revenues are not matching the expenditures.
It, the answer to the question, it did come up at the fiscal committee meeting, and Charlotte and I were not uncomfortable with a budget that had a deficit in it, primarily for a couple of reasons. One is the, the conservative estimate of, of pumping. The current estimate, I think it was about a hundred and forty, this estimate's a hundred and twenty-five. If the hundred and twenty-five is a hundred and thirty, the budget's in balance. So, you could, you could easily justify a hundred and thirty thousand, a hundred and thirty thousand acre foot number and balance the budget using a hundred and twenty-five thousand, I guess is more of a, more of a goal than anything else. And so we didn't feel that, that that deficit was a concern, plus the deficit is less than the contingency built into the budget. And so, if you took that contingency out, the budget would be in surplus instead of in deficit. So we didn't, we didn't, we specifically didn't think the deficit was a problem, and we didn't think any additional fees were needed.
I, 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 I'm not comfortable with, with assuming the contingency, the contingency should be part of every budget, so it should be part of the operating expenditure. But I am comfortable with your overall comfort level, at least you did, you did have the conversation, you weren't there at this point in time. I would mildly lean that way, but I'm, it's not something I would push, but I would watch this budget carefully. If our extractions don't look like they're projecting out to be that, et cetera, then I would, would revisit this topic.
I saw the same thing that you did and thought about it, and two things struck me about it. One, at seventy-five thousand on two point two million, it's pretty much in the noise of what a budget is. And for example of that, as we take a look at the budget, draft budget that's here in front of us, the original adopted budget for this year was two point five million, and it looks like we're going to come in at about two point one million as the end of the year. So again, this budget may move several hundred thousand dollars, and the amount that we're talking about, I don't consider a material amount for a two point two million dollar budget.
Well, and, and in reality, the, the way I interpret this is that we are in fact not in deficit. We have adequate funds. When you look at all the accounts that we have balances in, particularly the surcharge balances and the other designated accounts, and in fact, we show. balances and the other designated accounts, and in fact, we show increasing revenues over time, quite significantly increasing them. So the fact that this budget is segregated in such a way that, you know, we can think about operating accounts in this way, and we can think about what we set aside over here on this side, it's fine for visuals, but it's not correct to say we're in deficit because I don't believe that's the case.
Just, just to defend that, I think one-time expenditures should not be considered appropriate expenditures for ongoing expenses. And I want to make sure that our ongoing revenue matches our ongoing expenditures, and I'm just trying to get that. And with respect to, yes, there's noise in the budget, but if you don't balance it at the beginning, and if the noise breaks against you, you're now even a little bit more in the hole. And it just doesn't feel like a good, appropriate overall policy for us. I think our overall policy ought to be, we have reserves, and we can tap those reserves, but those reserves ought to be tapped for one-time expenditures. We are tapping them, but ongoing expenditures ought to match ongoing revenues as, as much as possible. Again, we've got, we've got the whole conversation about sustainability fee coming up, so I don't want to complicate that with a 75 cent, you know, charge here, and we're talking about big money. I just want to raise it from a philosophical standpoint, and it's something that I think we ought to at least have our antenna up about. This is the kind of stuff that you can take some pride when you say, oh, we're not, we're not structurally in a, if we're not in a structural deficit. If you're in a structural deficit, you, you know, the county of Ventura, when I came into it, they were spending their reserves down like crazy, and every year ago, and see, we're, we, we just got plenty of money, you know? And then they ran out of reserves, and then they had a real problem. So I just, you know, we're, we're going into a time of quite a bit of activity, and we're going into it a little bit off of what we could say is, because, you know, truly structurally balanced. But again, I'm fine with it. Thanks for letting me raise it. I'll hold that for, after the sustainability fee conversation.
And just to finish out what I was kind of thinking about, the, I don't think the, the extractors would, would think a 75 cent increase was, was drastic. But on the other hand, we, we are not in a, in a drastic deficit situation. And so, as you say, to complicate things and, and have people thinking that, gosh, GMA's raising fees at every time we turn, it's not appropriate at this point.
Chair West, directors, we do come to you quarterly with a budget update. The first quarter budget update is not as meaningful because there's a lag of, of when the revenues and expenses come in. But certainly at the mid-year, it certainly will be coming to you with a look at, at how we're tracking on the budget. So you'll have an opportunity at that point to see where the budget's tracking and, and take another look at, and have this conversation if it needs to be had again.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from the general public?
Moves of recommended actions?
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Chair West?
Yes.
Director Bennett?
Yes.
Director Aronio?
Yes.
Director Borchardt?
Yes.
Moving on to item number two, is an update on groundwater elevations.
Good afternoon, Chair West and directors. For the record, my name is Kathleen Rydel. I'm here to present item two, an update on groundwater elevations. Frequently, agency staff receives inquiries as to water levels within the agency boundaries. These are primarily associated with stakeholders trying to determine why they're getting diminished production from their wells. They want to know whether it's the equipment or groundwater levels. Additionally, agency staff has heard inquiries regarding to the recent wet winter of hydrolog, hydrologic year 2016, '17, and what effect that has had on groundwater levels. The agency staff prepares for your board water levels, presentations in the form of hydrographs associated with the BMO report cards, and we have annual water level fall, water level maps. And most recently, in April, the 2016 fall upper aquifer system and lower aquifer system maps were prepared. The county monitors groundwater levels on a quarterly basis, and they are preparing to release and launch on their website an interactive map which provides groundwater level information. And so this would be making the groundwater level information more publicly available to stakeholders. So with that proposed release of that data, county staff provided agency staff with more recent water level information, which agency staff has prepared hydrographs and would like to present to you. So as a reminder, this is a fall 2016 upper aquifer system map.
Excuse me, Kathleen, Kaylee, is it possible to get the maps up on our screens? Because we're just seeing a blank screen. And I can't see that far away. Nobody's screen has got an image on it.
Could we put into the budget new glasses for Director West?
Go right ahead, please.
Okay, this is the fall 2016 upper aquifer system map. These maps for the upper and lower aquifer system, and here's the lower aquifer system map. It's a compilation of water levels measured in the different aquifers that are part of that aquifer system. In the upper aquifer system, it's the Wainimi. Our upper aquifer system is the Magoo and the Oxnard aquifers. Lower aquifer system is the Wainimi, the Fox, and the Grimes Canyon aquifers. And in the Las Poses Valley, instead of the Wainimi, they have the upper, upper units of the San Pedro Formation. So that would be included in the lower aquifer system maps. So the proposed website, interactive maps will look something like what's on the screen here. This, the actual map will include the entire county of Ventura. I zeroed in and zoomed in to show more of the Fox Canyon area. And these dots here with numbers in them represent the number of wells in that vicinity which are being monitored. And as I zoom in, you can see the numbers. So I'm pointing to 65, there are 65 wells that are monitored in the vicinity of that dot, which have monitoring data, water level data. And then the 34, that represents 34 wells in the vicinity of that dot, which has water level data. So when you go to click on these dots, once this is brought up, it will produce, when you click on the wells, in fact, here's an X screen. If you zoom in, it'll show you the approximate location of a well that is being monitored. And it will also give you dots saying there's additional at this location. It looks like there's three additional wells in that vicinity. If you zoom in, it'll show the, the individual wells. When you click on the symbol, it'll pop up with the well number, and it'll pop up with a hydrograph. So that, this is now making available to the stakeholders, to the public, water levels in their vicinity wherever they want to look, whenever they want to look. And it was also provide, it's updated right after the county does its monitoring quarterly. They update the database, so you can go right after the quarterly monitoring. You can click on those, and you can get the most recent water level information. So this is not currently on the website. We will put a link on the FCGMA website once that is launched. To provide you with the information, this is a map which shows the locations of wells that are being monitored. And then I have just selected some wells showing different portions of the basin. This is for the upper aquifer system, the Oxnard Plain. This is a well, the complete state well number. And this is a hydrograph, so that's elevation versus time plot. And you can see what the water level elevations, each one of these plots is different. This begins in 1997, whereas this hydrograph has data going back to 1931. At the top of the plots are the reference points. That's what they're measuring, those that are monitoring it. To a select monitoring point, it's got an elevation, and then they do the depth always from that reference point to the water table. And then the elevation is calculated based on the surveyed reference point and the depth to water. So then we develop the elevation here. Added, the data that was provided, the county had provided reference historic lows. In this particular pot, plot, the historic low is as, as of September 20th, 2016, and that's that point there. So this is the low, and that was the lowest point since it started being monitored in 1997. For the 1931, this is their key well. If you go to the county, look at their annual reports to their spring and fall monitoring their water level maps, you'll find that this is a county key well. And so this, with this plot, they have added historic low as of September 30th, 1964, so that's the red line. And then the gold line is the low as of September 30th, 1977. And then you can see over here, this is the most current water level.
Excuse me, can I just ask one question? Do we know what the total pumping was, or the pumping in that area was in 1967 versus the present? Are we pumping roughly the same amount of water, quite a bit more water, quite a bit less water?
We didn't start collecting required pumping and records. It was mandatory, I think, going back to 1985, when they started reporting. Others reported before 1985. We don't know what pumping took place in the 60s or 70s. It wasn't reported to the agency.
So how about relative to 85? What, what, what was our pumping in 85 relative to?
You would have to go-
The last four or five years?
You would have to go back to who reported in that area, if you want in the vicinity of that well or in that basin, you would have to go back to those records. And then we would have to sum it up and try and see, you know, was everybody reporting at that time based on our records? We can get estimates of how much pumping was taken in that basin, or we could do an analysis to find out how much pumping was in that vicinity.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to present these two plots. The selected wells were just to show you different portions of the basin and, and the different aquifer systems. So this is the upper aquifer system. Here's plots for water levels in the lower aquifer system, and the arrows point to the wells that we, the hydrographs represent water levels for. So this is the lower aquifer system. This is in the Four Bay Basin. And then, so once again, water levels had been declining. They rose with the wetter season, but are declining again. Here, we can see that there was a little bump based on the wetter, more rainfall this past winter. So, and this is for, this particular well is perforated both in the upper aquifer system and lower aquifer system. And this particular hydrograph represents a well perforated in the lower aquifer system. This is the Pleasant Valley Basin. We have, these are lower aquifer system wells, and it's a well in the northern portion of the Pleasant Valley Basin. It's the county's key well. It has a longer record going back to 1973. And then we have one near the boundary, notice the boundary, is the county boundary, not the Fox Canyon basin boundary, or the ground, the, the state's DWR basin boundary, but this is county boundary. And this particular well is right on the boundary between the Pleasant Valley and Oxnard Plain. So-
Go back one second, please. Thank you.
Okay. And this is just to show you that the Las Poses Valley Basin extends, and that's based on the DWR Las Poses Valley Basin. This is the South Las Poses Basin, this is the East Las Poses Basin, and this is the West Las Poses Basin. And then currently, and for DWR, the basin extends all the way to the south side of the Camarillo Hills to the Springville Fault. So looking at the East Las Poses Basin, you'll notice that the county database identifies the area as shallow. We have the lower aquifer system in the East Las Poses Basin and West Las Poses. Shallow is commonly referred to units along the Arroyo Las Poses. This is inconsistent with the terminology that we currently use. That's the upper portion of the San Pedro Formation, which is part of the lower aquifer system. But it's the shallower aquifer for the county purposes than the Fox Canyon. So, and then you can see hydrographs, so this is 1992 to 2017, this is 1983 to 2017. And the, this again is the East Las Poses. This is in the lower, so this is actually the Fox Canyon Formation. And you can see how water levels are performing, or what the water levels are in the Fox Canyon. And then in, also in the East Las Poses. So reference point, this particular one is the 1990 droughts. It's the low as of December 1990, and this is the low as of October 1972. This is the West Las Poses, and this is the lower aquifer system, lower, shallow, so that's the upper portion of the lower aquifer system, that's the San Pedro Formation. So if you have any questions, and then Kim Loeb will demonstrate the proposed, or what's been prepared for the interactive map for the Public Works Watershed Protection District website, and that will be linked to the FCGMA.org website.
I have a question for you.
Sure.
Is it possible to identify which one of those wells are production wells versus monitoring wells? As you know, that production may have a significant impact as to what the readings are and the variability of the readings. I didn't notice any of those, whether they were the clustered USGS monitoring wells or if they were production wells.
We could make that suggestion to the county for them to make that note on the symbols.
Thank you.
Couple of questions. The, first Kathleen, that's very clear data. I just appreciate you doing things like identifying the story flow, where it was, and both in the early period and the past period, et cetera. So thank you for that, that data. My question is, we have this letter here referencing the, the view that generally declining, and the contention from the letter submitted to us is that, that's not appropriate to use that term. What is your response to that?
And the wells that I look at, and then I, it's relative to, oh, I can't, it's not there, but-
Could you, whoever's up there, could you get it back to the Las Poses? I'm looking at Las Poses West in particular, but the Las Poses Wells there at the end of that, yeah. Go ahead.
Well, if we look at the hydrographs, it's generally declining, and you have it declining to a reference point. If you look back to 2011, the highs, they're generally declining since 2011. And more recently, since the most recent rains, water levels have, when we get, after the rains, get additional monitoring data, we see that those water levels have declined since the little bump up due to the most recent rains.
Okay, good. That's how I was reading it also, that there is a decline, that while there's, you know, let's go, you know, keep working our way to Las Poses.
Okay. So if you look for a reference point, say 2011, we had a high, we're generally declining. Here's the little bump following the winter and the rise in water levels. But once again, when we monitor after that, we see that it's declining.
Great.
And in general, in the wells, the hydrographs that I looked at, we saw these features of declining water levels.
Both in Las Poses and here?
Um, this one is the Oxnard Plain. If I go to, well, here's the East Las Poses, this is- This is the shallow, so that's the San Pedro Formation. You can see that it went from, this is an elevation that's positive. It's starting at 300 feet above sea level, and it's down to about maybe 260.
Okay.
An elevation, so there was a decline. And here, we had, back in 2011, it was above 600 feet above mean sea level, and currently we're down at below, at 500 something.
And West Las Poses, if you could pop that up, please?
Let's see, this is east. Okay, West Las Poses. So we see that back in 1972, it was higher. In 2011, it was higher. And currently, at this particular well, we're close to the historic low as of 1991.
It's dropped, it's come up some, but did it actually drop below the historic low?
Yes. And you can see here that it, if we go back to 2011, we were above, I don't know, 40 feet above mean sea level. Currently, we're below mean sea level.
Okay, great. Wanted to understand what your term, thank you, generally declining referred to.
And Mr. Chair, Directors, if I could just make a comment that the purpose of this item was informational, and the reason, the timing, the reason for the timing of bringing it to you was to let you and the public know about this website that's going to go live shortly. In terms of extensive analysis of water level trends, water budgets, sustainable yields and all that, that is undergoing extensive technical review and analysis right now with DUDAC and the GSP development and the technical advisory group review and whatnot. So we weren't asking your board to make any decisions or take any actions on anything today.
I have a question. You first, Dave.
You started, go ahead.
Okay. Some years ago, maybe two or three years ago, this board had concerns with the quality of the data that was submitted, and we asked that the TAG take a look at these hydrographs, also vet them out and have a discussion, and also have the opportunity for the public to attend. Did I hear you correctly in saying that these numbers and these hydrographs before they were presented to us have already gone to the TAG, and they were vetted?
These particular hydrographs were not individually vetted by the TAG. This was an example and an informational item to show you what information is going to be available to you and the public shortly from the county's website.
Understood.
And so we weren't sure this was going to be live to show you. So what Kathleen did when she prepared her presentation, she had some static stuff to show, and as what it might look like, but we actually have a working demo of the website that I'm about to demo for you. And so that was the purpose of those hydrographs. Just general information. So this is the debate...
Excuse me, Kim, before you launch into that.
Sure.
Another comment, and I want to make this carefully, because I many times don't agree with Mr. Goldenring, but I think what the point was trying to be made was that in looking at groundwater levels in short periods of time, we can justify just about anything we want. We can justify increases, or we can justify decreases in ground levels. And that, to me, seems quite a bit inappropriate if we're trying to sustain, to look for sustainability. So I'm somewhat sympathetic to the argument in our letter that we were presented here, because to me, particularly being in farming, we know there's wet and dry cycles and droughts and rains, and it behooves us to look at things in a much longer picture than to say we are generally declining since 2011. I think we can probably all agree that everything in the boundaries has been declining because of the drastic death of rainfall. But when we start to look further back, and when we start to see fluctuations on some of these ones in the Las Poses that we just saw, that have this up and down fluctuation, I think we ought to be careful about just making general statements, even if they're informational, that we are in general decline, because that I don't think is necessarily true.
Right, Director Borchardt, I agree that we would, staff would not ask you to make a decision on some specific individual examples. So I, we'll wait until we have the GSP analysis, which will be a whole, there's a base period that is a long period that's looked at, and a lot of work and analysis by a lot of smart people on that. So that's what we'll bring to you when we have it developed, and for you to start making some decisions on it.
Director West, just before we go on, I can appreciate that statement about West Las Poses is not quite the same, but in nearly all of the other basins that she looked at, the long term is a decline. So you look over the longest period there, it's a decline. West Las Poses is the only one that's not. So I don't think it'd be inappropriate for people to say generally, water that we're managing in these various aquifers is generally in decline. So that's what the overall data would...
Well, I would say generally in the Oxnard Plain and the Pleasant Valley area, yes, we are probably in general decline.
Great.
I would say in both the West and East Las Poses, we have equal graphs there that show not necessarily that thing. So to state that and put that on public record, I think we have to be careful about that, because it leans one to believe that we need to take very drastic measures perhaps, when it's maybe not one size fits all. That's my concern.
Okay, we're ready to move on to this demo. So we hope that this will be live within the next month. And as Kathleen mentioned, there's, you click on the, these clusters, and for some reason, our connection here seems to be painfully slow. So we'll wait for that to refresh. Do you guys get to see this on your monitor? You're not seeing that as well?
No, I'm seeing anything.
Oh. So here we go. And so here's, this appears to be a well cluster, and you click on it, tells you whether the well's active or not. Click on the well number, and then a hydrograph will come up slowly, much faster when it will get to the real world. But so that's a shallow well, monitoring well by the coast. I'm not familiar, I don't, I haven't pre-selected any wells, I'm just randomly grabbing them. But one of the things that we've been frustrated with, and I know the public has been frustrated with, is being able to disseminate the water level information in a much quicker timeframe, both the County Watershed Protection District and the Fox Canyon put out annual reports, but generally that's, you know, quite a bit later. The water levels are measured quarterly by the county and other agencies, including United, and depending where they are in the county, Fox Canyon is principally, the county, United, and Cuyagus up in the Las Poses area. And so we thought this would be a good way, could be updated quarterly, and people can go and see exactly what the data look like. Now this is, like I say, it's a work in progress, so not all the data have been Q-Ced, and not everything's fully functional. There are layers, you can put on a satellite view. We can overlay the groundwater basins. Let me zoom out a little bit. There. So that's the county, maybe I zoomed out a little too far, but you know, you can pop up whatever, we'll show the sub-basin there, it's only showing the basin right now, but you can show the basin. Both in the state designation, and then the county has its own designation for basins, including basins in the county that are not designated as DWR 118 basins by the state. So there can be some additional information that could be displayed. We're looking into that in terms of information like was shown there, whether it's a shallow or deep, or what the aquifer pick might be for that. It doesn't look like that well has any information there. But I think we're excited about the opportunity to disseminate this information. One of the things we got a lot of questions about was after the wet winter, water levels have risen up, everything's fine, we can go home, except as we saw, certainly in the Oxnard Plain and in Las Poses Basin, Pleasant Valley Basin, that's not the case. In fact, our water levels now, many wells are lower than they were last year, despite the fact that we had had some rains. So that's, that was purpose of today's item, was to demo this. We'll let folks know when this gets completely operational and goes live, and then we'll put a link to it on our Fox Canyon website. And hopefully that will serve to help people be able to understand where the water levels are in their area and how they're behaving over time.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? From the general public? This is a receive and file, is there a motion to receive and file?
They'll move.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Wow. Well done, Chair.
Have a good break, Kevin.
Take care.